I'd like to thank everyone for being here for the May meeting of the Walton County Planning Commission. Certainly do appreciate everyone coming out on such a beautiful afternoon to be here for this meeting. At this time, I would like to ask Tim Kemp if he would open our meeting in prayer. And when he completes the prayer, if all you would please stand with us as we say the pledge.
Please stand.
Oh gracious Father, we come to you this evening in praise and thankfulness. We thank you for giving us this opportunity to be here again, Lord. Lord, we ask that you guide us, direct us, and lead us in all that we do here in the development and the overseeing of this great county in which we live. Heavenly Father, let the minds of these men work for the betterment of this county and the betterment of the people. We ask you for your blessings, in your holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen. If you would join us for the pledge, please.
Pledge that we are just the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you. I really appreciate that. If there happens to be a time that you wish to join us and you can't attend our meetings, I'd like to make known that you can join us on our Walton County Facebook Live page. Also, our next scheduled meeting for the Planning Commission will be June the 4th, and the next scheduled meeting for the Board of Commissioners will be June the 6th. With that, I'd like to show that all members are present, with the exception of Wesley Sisk. And at this time, I will ask if the board members have had a opportunity to review the minutes from our last meeting, and there's no errors or omissions that need to be made, I will take a motion for approval of those minutes.
I make a motion. We approve the minutes as published.
Second. I have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye and raise your right hand.
Aye.
Thank you so much. All right. So, we're going to move on with our agenda for this afternoon or for this evening. We do have a case that's old business on our agenda. We will be taking care of first, and once we've completed that, we'll move on to any new business. I would like to make mention before I begin, there will be an opportunity for the applicant to come up and speak, give us an idea of what their plans are and the reasoning behind their request. Once that's done, I will also allow for any opposition. I will ask that you minimize your time. We typically have this as about 10 minutes, and we can be a little tolerable with that, but with multiple people speaking, I would ask that you help us out as much as you can. I'd also like to say this, on this particular case, an old business that's coming up first, we heard this case, we heard both from the applicant and the opposition earlier, and the case was table. We asked that there be a meeting with the community and the applicant, and there was. I've received, and I'm sure the other members also have received, comments from both parties. So, we appreciate you taking the time to have that meeting. And the purpose of tonight's open format is going to be to hear anything that was derived from that meeting, and any concerns that may still be there, and also any changes that the applicant may have in regards to that meeting. So, at that time, I would like to ask for case LU 24010014 and Z 24010015, land use change from conservation to highway corridor to rezon 9.11 acres from A1 to M1 for climate control, self-storage, and office warehouse. Applicant is David Carruth, owner, AHC Bentley Road Properties LLC, located at 81 and 4742 Bentley Road. If the applicant is here, I'd like for the applicant to step up at this time and go over and review the plans for this site. I don't know if everyone was here.
I just wanted to make sure that.
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah, I had to give mine to Tracy, so I'll take one.
Thank you.
My name is David Carruth. I'm the landowner, and I'm doing this development with Chris Rosenthal, and so he's going to go over the plans with you guys.
Hey, good afternoon. My name is Chris Rosenthal with Rosewood Development Company. It's our second time up here, so nothing has really changed. We did take your advice and met with a lot of the homeowners out around Bentley Road. We basically went into it and just, you know, basically said we weren't there to ask for their permission, but we were there to try to accommodate with whatever they may want to see. We kind of took the approach of, you know, this thing's either going to be approved or denied. So, assuming if it is approved, you know, what can we do to make it where it's easy on the eye? We answered every question that was thrown at us that we could, within reason. One of the main concerns was something that just continues to get, you know, brought up, was about traffic and things like that, which we really can't control. But we took the opportunity to try to, you know, answer questions and see what we could do to make people, you know, make it where they like it. And if they don't want it, what can we do to make it better? With that being said, I'm here to answer any more questions.
Thank you. Is there any questions, further questions from the board? Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. Okay. Is anyone here in opposition to this case? Okay. And there's several of you. I want to give ample time and as many of you as I possibly can. Again, I wish, or I will ask that you be and recognize that there's several people here who wish to speak tonight, and that you be as appropriate as possible in allowing time for them to do so. Also, as the applicant has mentioned, there are things that, you know, we heard multiple times in our earlier meeting regarding traffic. We hear that most all every meeting we have. So, if you could keep it as pertinent as you can to what the applicant has proposed, and things that were pertinent to the meeting that you had, we would greatly appreciate that. Sir, with the jacket on the front, I'm going to ask you to come up first. Please state your name and tell us your address, where you live, please.
Good evening. Todd Haycock. I live in Ivy Brook Estates, just off of June Ivy Road. So, I have just a few points. I'll try and make them brief. First off, I noticed, looking at your 2017 and 2022 plan for future land use, that you have highway corridors established. 81 is not one of those corridors. And I think that by adjusting, making this change in zoning, it's going to open that up for another additional corridor, which then would also impact the conservation, which you have, you know, limited amount of conservation land use set aside for the county in the plan. And, you know, you'll start eroding that, and we don't want to erode that conservation. We don't want to become a Gwinnett County and have just houses everywhere, or businesses everywhere. That's my first point. I guess this, yeah. So, and then in the proposed plan that was online, under the addressing standards section, there was several things in there that I disagreed with, that they put in the plan. Number one was, the surrounding areas will not be diminished by the proposed development. I disagree with that. From the light pollution caused, from the commercial buildings, to of course, the traffic we mentioned. And then, the, it'll also impact, and one of the other ones was, it wouldn't impact property values. And I think property values will be impacted by adding that commercial establishment amongst all the homes that are around there. I know I wouldn't want to buy a house that's for sale that has these trucks coming and going, and the commercial businesses so close to them. And then, the next point I had was, developers didn't specify what exactly is going to go there. They said some storage, as well as some warehousing. With, given that there's storage units, you know, two miles both direction of the road, I imagine it's probably going to be mostly warehousing. And so, that just increased the truck, the noise, the traffic, of course, and the, you know, impact to all of us around from that perspective. Light pollution is one of those things that we need to consider as well. I know when they added the gas station there at Bold Springs, it's just a glow there now. Imagine having this real close to my house. It's going to cause, you know, detract from the area as well. And then my only comment, this has to be on traffic. I know there's a roundabout plan there, but I think as part of this development with the increased traffic that it demands, that there should be some demand, if it is approved, to add turn lanes or center turn lanes or something in there to help mitigate the traffic until the roundabout can be done. You know, in my opinion, I think it's absurd that the county or the state requires a human sacrifice before they will fix an issue, a traffic issue, like on Ozora Church Road. A roundabout scheduled there as well, right? But because somebody was killed, they put a stop traffic light in. So, anyway, those are my concerns, and I wanted to just make sure I shared those.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Please make sure you state your name and your address for us, please.
My name's Steve Phillips, 2204 Ardencrest Way. I live in the Ardencrest Development. Walking distance from where this place is. We've spoken before, but I just wanted to remind everyone here of a couple of things. This is really a zoning and land use issue. The traffic and all that comes and goes. But just a couple of years ago, there was a solar facility put right next door to this place. And one of our concerns was, that's the foot in the door. We start industry here, and then our residential community, and that's what it is. If you'll just go up and down the street, residents, homes, subdivisions, that's what it is, basically, and agriculture as well. Anyway, that was approved with some stipulations, which I'm concerned may not be, may not be being followed right now as they develop that spot. Anyway, we were concerned about that being the foot in the door. Then what do you know? Here's the next one. An industry right next door to this. So, I guess that, that kind of proves the point, that the homeowners here, we're fighting to keep our head above water here. We're fighting for our homes, our residences. And people said about, we know what happens when industry takes over. Homes kind of fall by the wayside. That's what we're fighting here. We're fighting for our families and our homes. I respect what Mr. Carruth, I understand it's his land, but his plans and the welfare of homeowners just don't, just don't jive in this case. And I would urge y'all to consider, 20 years ago, folks started moving in here in a residential area. That's the way it was owned. Let's don't forget that. Let's stand up for them. What happens is a decision. It's not inevitable. It can be, it can be controlled. We don't have to do this, folks. Please don't. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Ma'am, I'm going to let you come up, please.
Hi. Good evening, those that didn't know me. My name is Tammy Bentley. I live at 4842 Bentley Road, and the property that David owns does come right up against my property. So, that's kind of my concern. Our last meeting, y'all did request that we did have our meeting with David and the builder. I just want to bring up the notes that did happen through that meeting. When I first got there, we had a total of 32 residents there. Before the meeting was over at 6:00, we probably had 40, 45, maybe 50 citizens in that area that did come to our meeting and speak with them. The concerns that was brought up that night about the, the storage buildings being built, is that he's looking at no fence around it. He's wanting to border it with trees. There would be no live person there to man this. It's going to be all automated. He owns a property already in between, and he stated that he's already had to remove people that was living in the storage buildings. He's had to evict them from living there. He's also still wanting to put the entrance over the top of the hill, if you travel Bentley Road, to have the entrance coming off of Bentley Road. If you travel Bentley Road, we already have signs that ask that no big trucks, no big U-Hauls, no dump trucks and stuff travel that road. So, if you're looking at a storage building, they're going to be using that road with U-Haul trucks. And that road is dips on the side. There's no center markings. You're looking at redoing all of Bentley Road. For him to have his entrance on Bentley Road, because the state on Highway 81 is pushing back. I do know that he does own quite a few acres in the county. He owns out in Good Hope. He was told he couldn't put it there. He does own right in front of the Providence Club in Bold Springs. He could not put it there. He does own it, Bold Springs and Hickory Grove, where he wanted to actually place it, that he told us there at the meeting, but they were told that he couldn't do it there, but he could put it on Bentley Road, that no one would care there. Well, I was the one that cared. I was the one person that didn't know what to do, because it's next to my property. So, I just kind of reached out, went to Facebook, and started getting more support from my community, which I'm very thankful for. Also, I don't know if y'all are aware of it, but the builder is also going to be part owner of that storage building, which is totally fine. But I don't know if that had been brought up. And of course, that we do know that two miles down the road, there is a storage building. I brought that one up. And that there's also supposed to be one, to my knowledge, I've not researched it yet, and to my apologies, there at Ozora. But I'm going to go on and close, because I know there's other people that want to talk. When my journey started, I was one person. I was honored to speak and meet so many of you, not only that are my neighbors, but I now count as great friends. And to my family that's had to listen to me go on and on about this and my ideas, I thank you. I hope that one day, that my legacy, that as they travel past our land, whether they're living there or not, that they will remember of Mimi, Nana, or Tammy, as I'm called, fought so hard to try to save this piece of the county. I'm sorry. I will close with this. No matter what the outcome is, I'm still going to be Tammy Lowery Bentley. I respect David as a neighbor. He's been a great neighbor. And whatever the outcome is, I'm still going to respect him, and I'm still going to be the same person I am. I'm still going to watch over his land, just like I do now when there's teenagers down in there rutting and wrecking. I'm going to go run them out, because I know they're up to no good down in there. But also, I want you to understand that the people here tonight, not only has David worked hard with his, but the people here tonight have also worked very hard too. And they've all chose to make their home out in this beautiful countryside of the county in Bold Springs. Keep the development of growth in the city. The city, if you live in the city, you know it's going to grow. We see what's happened with Publix. Keep Walton County a beautiful county with development in town. Please don't destroy it all. I promise we'll have more and more wanting to come to move out to our area. I thank y'all tonight, and may God bless you all on this journey we call life.
Thank you. Ms. Bentley, one question. In mentioning that the property adjoins you.
Yes, sir.
Is there, is there not a piece of property that he's going to maintain into the tree farm between this and your property?
Yes, sir.
So, the development piece that he's proposing doesn't immediately.
It's not going to touch me.
Okay. I just wanted, I wanted to clarify that. Thank you. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anything else?
Any other questions? No, ma'am. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Chairman Hinton and board members, I'm Robert Andrews of 2212 Ardencrest Way, Bethlehem. I'm respectfully asking you to vote no on this proposed change, Bentley Road and 81, from A1 to M1. Aside from the congestion and traffic and burglaries and crime, and the devaluation of the property owner's values, we don't want 81 to become an eyesore, like if you look at Memorial Drive and Stone Mountain. If you look at former scenic highway 124 from Lawrenceville to Snellville. We don't want commercialization to change our beautiful bucolic area that we live in. The conservation section of the Walton County Plan, which was developed in conjunction with the Northeast Georgia Regional Plan, states that we should protect our natural resources and protect our habitat. And that's what I'm asking you to do. And I would like to think, want you to think about this. Would you want a storage facility and warehouse backed up to your property like it'll be backed up to Mrs. Bentley? And if not, I'll just close by saying, don't Gwinnett our Walton, please.
Thank you for that. I do want to correct you. I do think that we just clarified that this does not back up to Ms. Bentley's property. There's a, there's a portion of the tree farm in between the two. So, we did clarify that, okay? That's the reason I had her clarify that. Who else is here in opposition?
I'm running out of time.
I know, but I've been asked to extend. Who else is here in opposition?
He's saying the same thing.
Nobody? Step up, ma'am. Please state your name. We'll wind this down.
Hello. My name is Melissa Young, and I think Robert Andrews gave a real nice talk about what this is an issue. And I wanted to thank you, because you have held true to the rural charm described in the plan for this county. And I do think rural charm is what attracted all of us to build houses over there, because we really loved it here.
Where do you live, ma'am?
I live in Ardencrest.
Okay. So, you live in the neighborhood down 81.
Yeah. I can't get out of my neighborhood anymore. I have to drive and go down to the roundabout if I want to turn left. I have to turn right, go around the roundabout, come back, because the traffic on 81 is too dangerous for me. But I wanted to thank you. You've done a really good job of making sure that our county stayed pristine, well-conserved, and I appreciate it very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay. All right. I'm going to move on with our agenda. We certainly appreciate all the comments that have been made tonight. At this time, is there anyone here that's a proponent of this? In other words, someone who wants to speak on the applicant's behalf, as a proponent for the applicant? Yes, sir. Come up and state your name.
My name is Gary Walker. I've worked for Mr. Carruth for the last four, going on five years. And the, the one thing that I'd just like to reiterate to the crowd is, the gentleman has character. And if the gentleman says that any plan that he is proposing to go in there certain spots, I don't know about the logistics and everything, but I'll know he's a man of his word. And any kind of unforeseen, because problems arise, I know that the problem will, will be handled in a top-notch way. And that's all I'd say.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wish to speak on behalf of the applicant? All right. I'm going to ask the applicant to step up with any rebuttal they may have in regards, if you've got rebuttal.
I just want to touch back on the meeting that we had, and a couple of things that were brought up. So, yes, I'm part owner of another storage facility, and we've never had people sleeping in the units and so on. That was stated. I had mentioned at one point that we were going to try to do this facility with no fence, but that the county requires a fence. So, we were going to make applications, see if we can get that removed. But that's up to the county. That's not up to us. With all that being said, during our meeting on site, there was, you know, lots of things. We answered questions and whatnot. But I had asked the whole group at one point. I said, what would y'all like to see here? If you could put anything here, what would you like to see? Their answer was, nothing. And I had reminded them that if we were to develop it into a subdivision, there'd be multiple homes, way more traffic. Most of them would be coming from Gwinnett, which is most of my clients. And I'm a home builder here in Walton County. Most of my clients are coming from Gwinnett and moving to Walton, for the same reason that each and every one of us live here. I've lived here my entire life. Started in Loganville, watched it grow, moved to Monroe, watched it grow. Now, I live in Jersey. Jersey. I mean, I've been on y'all's side of the fence before, I understand this, but at the end of the day, I mean, I couldn't stop what happened where I lived the last two places I was there. And I also made the comment that, you know, being a local developer with the local home, you know, landowner, I mean, I think what we're proposing isn't out of line to what is already on 81 and what seems to happen on state highways. You know, we could build houses, still going to have traffic, still going to have cars galore, or we could do what we're going to do and have, you know, a couple of small businesses with storage. Nobody really visits storage that much. So with that being said, I just wanted to recap on the meeting and what we had talked about and just clarify a few things. So again, if this does get approved, regardless, we're still open to do and take any suggestions on how this thing could look where it's easy on the eyes for the people that have to drive by. We're always open to that, and we always will be. So I appreciate y'all's time, appreciate, you know, everyone coming and whatnot, but I just wanted to clarify those things, and thank you, guys.
Thank you. I appreciate the question. Oh, stand one second. Got a question.
I have a question, two things, actually. The lighting that was issued, you're not going to have up lighting. What would the lighting situation be?
No, we were going to, because that was a concern they had mentioned, so we were just going to put buildings that shone down on the ground around the building. So no tower lighting like you see at some of the facilities.
And the fence, if the county requires the fence, you do the fence?
Hundred percent, yeah. David had recommended a live fence, since he's in the tree business, he was going to wrap it with trees, make it where they didn't really see it.
Which is less intrusive. It looks better.
If we have to do both, we'll still do both.
Could you do both? That's what I was going to ask next.
Yeah, be glad to.
Okay.
Yeah, like I said, we're just, we're here to help and make it, whatever anybody suggests, we'll consider it.
I have one more question. Someone mentioned a solar farm adjoining this. Is that the case? Is there a solar farm adjoining this property?
That is true.
On the other side of the creek.
Okay. Which property is that on?
You see where it's outlined in white, ours, just to the left of that?
Okay.
The address is 7973.
Okay.
And also remember, you know, the track that's showing up there is the full 31 acres. We're only taking that sliver right along Highway 81, which is right there where it cuts off. So it's, you know, it's a little misleading when you're looking at the full 31 acres. They're looking at that thinking, where are they going to develop this whole thing? It's only a nine-acre sliver that has mostly frontage on 81. And again, we said that we would not have, we would not allow retail, which that's not something we're going after, is any kind of retail. So no gas stations, nothing like that.
So office, storage, and warehouse?
Correct.
Any other questions?
Absolutely.
Thanks, guys. I appreciate it. At this time, I am going to close the public hearing regarding this case.
Can I just ask you one question?
Not now, ma'am. I just closed public hearing. And with that, I would like to make a motion regarding this. And before I do, I'd like to make a couple of comments regarding some of the things that you guys brought to light. One being, one of the ladies said that she felt that there was a self-storage facility that was approved at Ozora. And that is true. That was last year when that was approved. There was also one during my tenure here that I can remember, just a short distance from there, between there and Loganville, Watkins, I believe, the one we did there. In regards to a couple of people who brought up our land use map, the 2022 land use map, which I have reviewed, I will agree with you that the area along Highway 81 is not established on that land use map as highway corridor. However, that being said, the first development that I can remember was the convenience stores at Bold Springs and 81. Then the one that, I think even before that, was the one at Bold Springs and Ozora. And then there's multiple other locations between Ozora and Loganville where convenience stores or other commercial uses. Also, the property adjacent to Mr. Carruth, which this board passed unanimously last year, this is not just a strategic solar farm. This is actually for a structure they're going to have there with the solar farm. Our understanding at that time was that it's in regards to the heating and air industry and how solar systems are going to be engaged in that industry. And it's, they're going to have a school, if you want to call it, a training facility there to train HVAC contractors regarding the installations of those type of uses. So there is a commercial use right adjacent to this property. Our state highways within the county in multiple areas, in all areas, I feel, that I have knowledge of, are those areas that commercial has been concentrated on and it's been utilized. And if you look at most counties with the highway corridor, our state highways are areas, and therefore it keeps it off of our thoroughfares. Someone brought up that Mr. Carruth didn't want to make an application for the one across from the Providence Club. Well, obviously, there's no state highway corridor there on Bold Springs. And also, the other property has at Hickory Grove, which is directly across the road from where I live. So there, again, would be considered as spot zoning, moving away from what we have traditionally tried to do in disallowing those locations as they infringe upon communities, much like last year. I think it was last year, was it not, Sharon? And we had the one for a Dollar General that was not on a state highway. And I believe the last five, I had you look that up for me, the last five that we had approved, all were on a state highway. So we don't want to deviate from that. We want to keep anything of this manner as centralized as we can and not do anything that's an infringement upon our county road systems for as long as we possibly can. So with that, I would like to make a motion regarding this, LU 24010014 and Z24010015. I'd like to make a motion for approval with the following conditions. All of the development of self-storage shall be fenced with a minimum of a six-foot vinyl-coated chain-link fence. Also, a landscaped shrub and evergreen or evergreen tree shall be established along the side fronting Bentley Road in the rear where it adjoins Mr. Carruth's residual property. So basically, that'll keep from, out of sight for people coming down and commuting on Bentley and also as they're on Bentley Road. So those two sides of the property. Gated access to the self-storage facility shall limit access seven days a week from 7:00 AM until 10:00 PM. Office warehouse areas shall be limited in hours of operation from 7:00 AM till 10:00 PM, seven days a week, with no retail allowed. All exterior lighting shall be directed downward. The sides of the office warehouse fronting 81 and Bentley Road both shall have a blend of either brick or rock facade. There shall be a traffic study conducted to determine the possible improvements of the turn radius on Bentley Road at the intersection of 81. And every effort shall be made to establish an entrance with a right-turn-in, right-turn-out Highway 81 entry located as closely as possible to the address of 7973, which is Vala Solar Farm. Also, an entry shall be established on Bentley Road with a D-cell and A-cell lane and located at the furthest point possible from the intersection of Bentley Road and Highway 81. With these recommendations, I make a motion for approval.
I'll second that motion.
I have a second. All in favor, raise a right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, right hands, nay.
Nay.
Two nay. You an aye or a nay?
Nay.
A nay. Okay. And at this time, if there's any comments from the members, I'll take those comments at this time.
And those conditions have to be met, right?
The conditions will be what's presented to the Board of Commissioners.
Presented to the Board, okay.
Okay. And I will make a note on that. So these conditions will move to the Board of Commissioners. It will be to the Board of Commissioners if they follow my recommendations, if they don't, if they come up with something on there. So I would say that everyone that's in attendance tonight that has any concern regarding this, that you also be present for the meeting of the Board of Commissioners as well. All right. If you guys, if there's anyone here just for this that you want to walk out before I start my next cases, I'll be glad to let you do that. All right. So we will move on under new business. And first on our agenda for the evening is Z24020015. This is to rezon 4.80 acres from A2 to B2 for the resale, for resale. Applicant is Craig Hayes, and he is the owner as well, 2424 Highway 278 LLC is a property owner, I guess, as well, located, the property is located at 2424 Highway 278. Is the applicant for this request here? Yes, sir. If you'd please step up, state your name, tell us what your plans are.
Thank you, sir. Hi, my name is Craig Hayes. I own two parcels on Highway 278, 2404 and 2424. I am requesting to rezone these to B2 for the purpose of resale. My reasoning being that it is the highest and best use for my resale, and the neighborhood is transitioning to commercial property. And as it's noted on the future land use map, this area is designed for, I guess, what y'all would call employment center, which B2 is a part of. And so that's kind of where everything's at.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for the applicant?
I'd like to, so there's no particular business type that you're planning to put on this? Is this just a?
No.
Requested?
Right now, just a request.
Nothing specific?
Just a resale. I would assume that anybody that had a specific use would have to come to the county to get approval for that use prior to purchasing it. Thank you.
So you stated that you believe that this is the highest and best use of this property, but you don't state a use.
I mean, I'm not the buyer, so.
So what is the property? I mean, the current zoning is residential, correct?
Correct.
So you're saying that you can make more money off of it being commercial?
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank y'all.
Is there anyone here opposed to this application? Yes, sir. Please step up and state your case. Give us your name and your address as well. No, you're good.
My name is James Evans. I live on Darrell Drive in Social Circle. Thank you for this opportunity. I appreciate it. As was stated, this isn't a residential area. Single-family homes, single dwellings. And the fact that there is no purpose, as far as business is being stated, to change it from residential to business, I really don't understand that. If a business wants to come in, let them buy the property, come to y'all, present the case, and let y'all make a decision at that time. Talking about it transitional, well, I lived and worked in Atlanta for 40 years. Moved out here 20 years ago to get away from Atlanta. I know development's coming, but we need to be mindful of what we're doing and where we're doing it. Please do not allow this to take place as far as rezoning from residential to business. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any questions for this gentleman? Anyone else in opposition? Is there a proponent here to speak on behalf of the applicant? No. Mr. Applicant, do you have any rebuttal to this gentleman? If it's so, please step up.
I fully respect your opinion. However, if y'all will look up here to the screen, every parcel across the street and two parcels on the side of the street, my two parcels are on, have already been rezoned to commercial as the future land use map calls for. I mean, we all know that this is where the neighborhood's going, and my highest and best use to get most money for resale is to make this commercial and sell it to a commercial person. Now, you know, I'm not an expert on all the rules, but even if it is zoned commercial, it is my understanding that if a business wants to come in and develop this, even after it's zoned commercial, they will still have to come in with their plan to.
Not to rezone.
Not to rezone, but to get their plan approved of what's going there.
Right.
They will still have to. So where you're saying we don't know what's going there, you know, they're not just, this is not just turning them loose to do whatever. Whoever comes in to develop this or buys it for development will have to come to the planning commissioner, the board of commissioners, or the planning and development department, somebody to get their plan of what they're putting there approved.
What would be allowed would be anything that's deemed under a B2 zoning.
Correct.
Any use.
Correct.
With no restrictions.
Which would have to match the current neighborhood. That's correct?
Well, it does, it does match the character of what's across the street. What I'm trying to establish is that once it's zoned, if it's zoned B2, then anything that's allowable under B2, the property can be used for that use.
Correct. With no community input.
With no community input.
But it would have to go by the development regulations for those specific uses, correct?
It would.
May I ask a question? So the ones you mentioned on your side of the road that are zoned B2.
Sure.
Are there businesses there? Were they rezoned for a specific purpose for those businesses?
The one on the corner, I believe, was rezoned, and it's actually resale. The one closer to the interstate here, it was rezoned. I do not know the purpose. It wasn't up for sale, and it was at one time residential. And that's. Thank you.
This is located right on that curve, right?
Uh, no.
Oh, the hill, hill curve or something?
Curve is just past this.
Yeah. I think I've seen that property.
This is right directly across from the mechanic, the body shop and the barber shop. Any other questions?
Yep. Any other questions for the applicant?
I'm going to remove this zoning layer, just so you can see a little better.
Can I have a vote?
No, sir. Sorry.
That's a church. It has its own commercial? No, this one.
Yeah, this one, I thought.
It's hard to tell what those uses are from this map.
So that's the commercial?
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, I will retract my, you can go ahead, sir. I'll retract my statement to you when you ask if you can have rebuttal. You can on the 4th of next month. This will go before the Board of Commissioners if you have anything additional at that time. Yes, sir. Thank you. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Okay. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if. At this time, I'm going to close the public hearing and ask if there is a recommendation from the board.
I will make the recommendation in case number Z 2402 0015 to deny the request on the grounds that there is no specific purpose. And I feel it's inappropriate to blanket rezon without specific plans. When there are specific plans, we could reconsider.
Okay. I have a motion to have a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
This will go to the board of commissioners next month on the 4th. Okay. Next on the agenda for the evening, Z 2402 0017. This is to rezon 17 acres from A1 to A for beef cattle business. Applicant owner, William and Gina Hockaday. Property is located at 26 Social Circle Fair Play Road, Social Circle Fair Play Road, Pinell Road, Parcels. The applicant here. Okay? If you'll please state your name. And I do have a curiosity question. You wouldn't happen to be related to a guy named Bill Hockaday, would you?
Uh, yeah.
That was at Gwinnett County Tax Assessors, did all the conservation. What a great man. I just want to say that.
Do you have a sister-in-law?
What a great man.
Do you have a sister-in-law that teaches at Social Circle?
Yeah, what a wonderful man. What a wonderful man. Okay, go ahead.
Yes, our daughter-in-law teaches at Social Circle.
Ah.
Okay.
Okay, so we personally don't want to rezon, but we have a, we have Hockaday Farms, which is a beef cattle business that we started, I guess, a little over a year ago. We've just been set up to friends and family mainly. And then recently, we got our mobile vehicle license to sell at farmer's markets. We, the majority of our herd is on two leased properties in Morgan County. But when the cows are ready to be fed out, we bring them to our property, the 15 acres. We have, you know, the two acre piece and the 15 acre piece. We feed them out and then when they're ready to go to processing, we load them up, take them to the processor and pick up the frozen meat when it's ready and bring it back and store it until we, we sell it. So we applied for a business license and were told that a requirement of the business license, since our address was in Walton County, that we needed to rezon our property because the, the cows are there, that we needed to rezon from A1 to A. And we are in conservation use for the, the use of raising the cattle there. We have no plans for development. The sole purpose is just for the business license.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the applicant?
Will there be additional structures required or it's inside existing buildings, so no traffic is going to change? It's no different?
No different.
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're just looking for compliance, is what you're telling us?
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any additional questions? Thank y'all so much.
Thank you.
Is anyone opposed to this? No opposition? Anyone here to speak on behalf of the applicant? None?
I will. I'm so happy to see somebody still farming.
I hear, I hear you. I hear you.
And wanting to continue.
Yes.
All right. So I see no need for rebuttal. So we'll move on and I'll ask for a recommendation from the board.
I'll make the recommendation in case Z 2402 0017 to approve the request.
I have a first and I have a second.
Second.
I have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Can we, sir, can we approve as per the request? Because the A zoning opens up a lot of different things. So approve to A for the beef cattle use?
Yes.
If that's good, okay.
Yes, so approve as, as presented.
As presented. So I'll go back and take the motion that it be approved as presented, and I have a second.
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
All right. So this will move as well to the board of commissioners meeting on the 4th of next month. Thank you. Okay. Lastly, on our agenda for the evening, after I find my glasses, Z 2403 0001. Rezon 2.24 acres from B2 to M1 for a portable concrete plant. The applicant is Norman L. Kinnabrew. Owner, Philip, Philip Osborne. Property is located at 2435 Highway 278. And is the applicant for this here? Okay. Sir, if you would please step up, tell us what your plans are for the property here.
I'm not a very good speaker, so. But just to put a concrete, mobile, uh, put a, a concrete plant up.
Okay. And the purposes of that would be?
Manufacture concrete.
Right. To serve the, the whole surrounding area?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And sir, what's your name?
Norman Kinnabrew.
Okay, thank you.
Do you have any renderings of the size of the plan or the, the scale that you're planning to do or any, anything to show what your plans are there?
Yes, my engineer does.
Okay.
Yeah, sure. Go up with the applicant and state your name and tell us who you are, please.
Hi, this is Hannah Caswell with Caswell Design Group. And we, when we submitted the plans, I, I don't know what you have here as far as the submitted civil plans.
We just have a site plan in our packet.
You have a site plan? Well, that would be something to talk on, yes.
It won't. They have it on their, in their packet, yeah.
So just pretty much with some of the site plans and we, we plan to make sure we keep everything as clean and as.
And, and protected from the outside. Oh, it's, it's not completely covered on the top, but it's completely covered on the outside from the plants. And we're also utilizing the existing buildings, the buildings that are there and the existing building left over there, and we're adding to it.
Step back in front of the mic for us, please.
Okay. Yes, yes. So, yes, so the site plan would be the, the existing, we're utilizing everything that's existing there and then we're adding to some of the things that are existing there. He's going to make the existing building that is there.
It's gonna be the office.
The office area.
Can you tell me the process? You say manufacturing concrete. Are you taking used concrete, cracking, breaking? Tell, tell me your process, please.
Basically, we just bring in aggregate and sand and cement, cementitious material. And we put it in a holding silo or container. And then we will mix it with water and put it into the cement trucks and then deliver it.
And how many trucks do you expect per day?
As the area grows, it'll be more, but from the very beginning, we'll probably run about five to 10 trucks out, out of there a day.
So I guess I should, loads per hour, maybe? Is that more appropriate question for you? How many loads per hour would you be loading out?
Well.
And I understand it'll be new. You don't know that, that's kind of a pipe, yes, on the front end. I get it.
Um, when we first get started, maybe two or three loads an hour when we first get started and then we ramp up from there.
Okay.
What would your hours of operation be?
Well, with the concrete plant, it depends on the, who's ordering it. Generally, when residential people order it, it's basically when the sun rises at 8:00 or.
Correct. Correct.
And then we'll have some commercial people that will want to pour maybe early, early mornings. So it just depends on when they order it.
Yes, sir.
What do you mean by portable?
We can move it. It, we can, we can move it within 24 hours.
The whole plant?
The whole plant.
So this is similar to, say, like I saw one a while back that the Arsenal had out on 441 going the other side of Eatonton. They have a mobile plant for that project right there, so it's going to be a similar mobile plant to that.
Exactly.
Kind of, I think there's also one established over at Highway 11 and 316 that they're using there for that, for that job as well. So it is to where the, the parts are brought in, trailered in, got wheels, some of them still have wheels mounted to part of the facility where it can be taken apart and moved.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, okay.
Do you anticipate moving it a lot?
No.
So you're, you're looking at this being permanent?
Yes, sir.
But portable?
Yes, sir.
But you state that it'll be closed in on all sides? Not sure how that works.
No, it's, it's not really closed in on all sides. It's, uh.
That's what I thought.
It has dust collectors, silos and things of that nature to make sure the environment stays clean and that there's no pollution.
There won't be any dust around?
Sir?
There won't be any dust around because I have seen some dust from this type plant.
Yes, it'd be minimum, very, very minimum. We, we're required by the state and they regulate us and we have to renew our license and we also actually have to get, I guess it's called a dust permit or whatever it's called. So we have to get, make sure that we stay in compliance and don't emit no more than a certain amount of dust.
From the EPD, environmental.
Yeah. They, they highly regulate, regulate us.
That's why there is, there is an outside barrier, but it's not totally.
So you have three products that you'll be bringing in to mix this concrete, the gravel, the cement mixture itself and the sand?
Well, yes, sir. It's actually one, uh, two aggregate products and one cementitious products.
I'm asking that because I'm trying to figure in my mind how many trucks we're looking at coming in and out, because you have trucks delivering to make it and then you have trucks going out to, to the work site itself to pour.
Correct. Basically, for every truck that goes out, there's going to be a truck coming in.
Okay.
So it's, it's more or less like a one-to-one ratio, except for the cementitious material. Cementitious material, one truck of that come in and it can do 10, 10 going out.
Right. So that's hauled in on tractor-trailer and put into the silos.
Yes.
Gravel will be whoever you have a contract with that's going to be hauling the, from the quarry there for your stockpile? You'll be stockpiling gravel there?
Yes, sir.
Your stockpile location's going to be enclosed with concrete or just a open dump?
Everything we do is, with concrete, the, the, the ground.
Right.
A lot, a lot of the concrete plants will try to save a dollar and just put gravel down.
Right. That's what I'm asking, but you're, so let's say where your stockpile area is for gravel, will that be a, a, a concrete bunker enclosed?
All concrete.
Yes, sir.
On the sides, front, except for the entrance part where you come in with the machine that in the ground, we will have no dirt exposure, no gravel exposure. Everything's 100% concrete as far as what we store our material on.
Got you.
Where, where on the site plan are the materials going to be stored?
Can you pull the site plan up?
I don't think we can pull it up on that screen. We just have a copy in our hand.
And it's very small.
I also wanted to, I know Ron wanted to speak on this, but I also wanted to, and maybe it's common knowledge, but all of his products are going to be recycled materials. That's what happened, but you do.
No, 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 no. No, not at all. No, no, no. We do use some recycled material because we, we actually use green powder, well, green cementitious material as well. We're working on a material coming out of Egypt, I think Egypt right now, that has zero and it's never been heard of before. And it's kind of, even to say it, it's kind of difficult to say it because it's zero, um, it's, it meets, it meets our way down to zero spec for the green concrete. So it's the greenest concrete you can buy on planet Earth. And we're working a, a deal right now coming out of Egypt, I think Egypt, to get that. And we have another location in La Tonya and all of our storage units are all concrete floors, concrete bank bunkers and everything.
Any additional questions?
Yeah, I got one for you, bud. When your trucks are returning to the shop, do you have a washout for them or do they wash out on site where they pour at?
They wash out on site and they wash out when they get back at the end of the day.
So you've got some kind of protection to hold all that?
Yes, sir. That's all in, in the plans. And we also are monitored by EPA or EPD to make sure that any runoff that we have is treated. But we generally recycle and don't have runoff. But if there is any runoff, we have a, I guess it's like a water treatment plan in place.
It's a water quality filter base?
Yeah, water quality that treats it and inject it and do whatever it needs to do to make sure.
So it's separated from the storm drain system?
Yes.
Is that what's going on, so it won't get into the?
100%, never, ever. You'll get in a lot of trouble. You'll be let go into the storm drain system. That is, no, sir. That's a no-no.
Maybe I missed this. How many trucks are you looking at having on site, stored on site overnight?
From the very beginning, five to 10.
You batch it nine yards at a time?
We can batch up to 10.
Okay.
Yes, sir. But we can't get on the state highways with it. It's overweight.
Any additional questions? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Is there anyone here in opposition to this request? Okay. State your name again for us, please, sir.
James Evans, Darrell Drive, Social Circle. That's a little bit further out.
Mr. Evans, where do you live in proximity to this property? Just curious because I know you were here in both of them. So how, how close do you?
Couple miles.
Couple miles, okay?
I'll say the word Rivian and they'll tell you exactly where I live. Darrell Drive, Rivian, my front yard. That's good, right there. Thank you so much. I'm going to kind of kill two birds with one stone. The road that's out here, 278, is a two-lane blacktop. Speed limit's 55 miles an hour. There's already 18-wheelers that are driving to and from the distribution centers for General Mills and Dart. This road does have a curve to the left as you're coming off the property. To the right, it goes up a hill. I don't know the percent grade, but I'm willing to bet it's 10%, maybe a little bit less than that. Reason I bring that up, the other gentleman whose property wanted to go business is direct across the street from that, so there is a curve in the road. So now we're going to have cement trucks that are going to be pulling out from the plant, 50,000-pound truck. If he turns right, he's going to be going up a hill, competing with an 18-wheeler coming back from General Mills or Dart at 80,000 pounds. There's a limited sight between the curve and hill right now. And that's not an indication of something good that's going to come out of this. There will be a wreck there, I promise. Talking about the hours of operation, I was never involved in construction, but normally construction starts early, 7:00 or so in the morning. So they're going to have to start mixing up all their concrete. Residential houses all around that, all of them are well-dependent for their water. Talking about runoff and trying to manage that, the noise, the truck, the congestion, the traffic, I just don't see that working out well for this particular area.
Shawna, can you put the zoning overlay back on there, please? Thank you.
And I know the gentleman said that they would try to maintain as best they could the washout, you know, going into storm drains. There is no storm drains out here, they're ditches. Like I say, there is no municipal water. It's all well to begin with. The probability of something happening, contaminating the soil is great. So like I say, and I could add a couple, three more things, but I don't want to rehash old business. I just think that a cement plat, a plant being portable out there, if the zoning gets changed to this, will the zoning get changed back if the plant is removed at some point down the road? I don't think that's going to happen, but I had to throw that out there, too. I didn't mean to jump back on what I was going to talk about in June with the, the board of commissioners, but that, there is a curve there, it is a sizable curve and you have a line of sight issue for traffic. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions? Shawna, I, I've got a question because I'm confused and I know I'm easily there. So is, is the one that you have highlighted, is that the one that we're looking at right now for this application?
No.
No.
Okay. I didn't think so, because the earlier application was 2404 and this one is 2435, so it should be on the opposite side of the street.
That's right.
Yeah, when I moved it, it.
Yeah, when I moved it, it took that out.
Yeah.
2435?
Can I see? We'll go with pull it by the address.
Yeah.
You have to pull it up.
B. B. B as in boy? That's what I pulled up, isn't it?
As in dog.
Is it?
That's it. Philip Osborne.
There you go. Much better.
Sorry about that.
No, no, no. I was just looking at the addresses and I was thinking, surely this is sitting on the same side as the last one. Okay. That makes a whole lot more sense to me. Does applicant wish to have any rebuttal regarding the words we heard from someone who's opposed
With all due respect, we are willing to do whatever it takes to be in compliance and make sure that there are no accidents or things of that nature, even if we have to put in an additional decel, a cell lane, or expand the existing decel or cell lane that's there now. The property is not in a curve, but there is a slight hill, but you have a very good vision coming in and out on the top end of the... On the topper end of the property, and you have pretty good vision on the existing entrance and coming in and out, the existing entrance right now as it stands. So we need to add an additional entrance and use the entrance on the topper end. We're willing to do that. And as far as the water is concerned, contamination, that's one thing I can guarantee you, we won't have any contamination with the well water or anything else. We do a very good job of being regulated by EPD and following all of their rules and regulations.
Do you have any idea what your frontage is on Highway 278? I'm just having a hard time finding it on this paperwork we have.
I don't...
Do you know what the exact frontage? How much?
250 feet.
Thank you.
And we are proposing a decel lane on the site plan that was submitted.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Any questions for the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right. At this point, I'm going to close the public hearing regarding this request, and I'll take a motion from the board.
I've got a question before a motion regarding the regional commission study. Was that ordered by the owner? Is that who?
It's required by the county.
So it's required by the county. Are you familiar with the report from that?
Please, sir?
Yes.
I have the one you're talking about.
Okay.
Okay. I'm sorry. It's the DRI, and we're still waiting because it is the concrete plan...
Right. The county code requires it. The DRI is in. It came in yesterday.
Oh, okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Ma'am, would you...
He's got it. He gave you a copy of what I was gonna give you, so you've got it.
Yes, I haven't seen this yet.
Sure.
We are aware that we are waiting on it, and that's why...
Yeah. Yeah, they addressed some concerns on here, you know, regarding dust and residences nearby. Their final comment was that prior to any approval, the county should measure the life cycle cost of the infrastructure needed to serve the project to ensure that they would be... Not be committing to more maintenance expenses than the new tax revenue can cover. But it's pretty lengthy. Like I said, they did call out several items of concern on here, and the Board of Commissioners will have a copy of this prior to their meeting.
Got it.
Thanks, Shawna.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I will take a motion.
In the case number Z24030001, I would like to make the motion to deny the request for the purposes of noise, traffic. It is in a residential area, and concrete plants do cause considerable dust. It just is not the right area for that, though it is business around it. There's also housing all around it, and noise and dust and concrete trucks all day are not fitting to that area. So I make the motion to deny the request.
Okay. I have a motion for denial. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
I have a second. All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And this, any nay, anyone opposed, this will go to the Board of Commissioners for their meeting on the 4th of next month, okay? All right? Any public comment? Have you people talked to anybody? Have y'all said anything tonight? Do y'all want to say anything?
That's right here.
No? Okay. Very good. I will take a motion. What was that?
They were just here for fun.
Oh, for fun. Okay, great. I can think of... No, good.
Oh, watch it.
All right. I will take a motion for adjournment.
That's a problem.
So I'm moved. Josh made a motion for adjournment. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor, raise your right hand and say aye. Thanks, guys. See y'all next month.
They need to pay me.